No, I'll just tell you guys the questions.
Do you have to like alert us to the questions?
That's okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, we think we are live. Nobody is joining us yet.
We'll give them a couple minutes.
We don't think.
It shows how many people are on it, right?
Yeah, it does.
Zero. I think somebody from starting to go up.
So there's two.
There's little eyes right there.
Yep.
So you go.
Welcome to all of you that have joined us on our Facebook Live Town Hall meeting on COVID-19. We'll be starting here in just a few minutes. We'll let others join before we get started. If you have questions, please comment right now with your questions. We don't intend to have a huge, long presentation tonight for our Town Hall meeting. We are looking for questions and we will do our best to answer them. We do have a few that came in earlier that we'll address.
Welcome to you that have joined us on our Facebook Live.
And we have our secretary across the table that's also listening in. So I'm Dave Blin, you're the administrator. For those of you that don't know, this is Brandon Stoller with me. He's our Director of Nursing. Lila Fair is also in the room. She's our third person on our COVID Task Force here at Fairview Haven. Lila's going to be watching the comments as they come in and will ask us the questions. So again, we really appreciate any questions that you have. Go ahead and comment them in your, in the comment section. So maybe to get started, we'll talk just a little bit about the outdoor visits that was approved last week by Illinois Department of Public Health as a part of our reopening plan, I guess you would say, for the state of Illinois reopening of nursing homes. They have now allowed outdoor visits, which some of you may be a little bit confused in that because we have been doing outdoor visits. But the outdoor visits that we've been doing have not really been social distancing or anything like that because we've had plenty of distance. We've had nine feet, 10 feet between the visitor and the resident. So we now actually can reduce that to six feet. So if you want to come and visit a loved one here, you can do that with a six-foot distance. Just some of the rules that you might be, want to be aware of before you come. You do need to call and schedule those visits ahead of time. And when you call, you're going to be asked some questions just to make sure that you will be able to pass the screening when you come to do the visit. So you're going to call the receptionist. The receptionist, we have a receptionist at our front desk from 5:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. And so you can call anytime during that time to schedule your visit. Your visits can go as late as about 8:30 p.m. Is kind of when we want things to be wrapped up. Most of our residents are ready to be done with visits at that time anyway. They do need, the visits will need to be supervised. And so that's one reason they need to be scheduled so that we can make sure that we have staff available to help you and to watch the visit, not watch the visit, but supervise and oversee the visit. That is a requirement of the state. You cannot get with any further than six feet. You have to be within six feet of distance. I don't know if I'm always saying that right, but it's six-foot distance, social distancing, just like everywhere else in the world right now. You will have to wear a mask. Those, both the visitor and the resident have to wear a mask. We have visiting areas set up. We have five visiting areas, so we can have five visits going on at once. They all are located in our activity courtyard and they're all measured off, so they're all safe. Sorry, we're having some technical difficulties with our other computer. So they're all measured off for six feet of safe distance. We do have two visiting areas that will allow for more than two visitors. And how we're doing that is you have at least about nine feet away from the resident. Where more, if you have a family, for example, myself, if I come and want to bring my children and my wife, my wife and I would have to be screened in and we could sit the six feet away from the resident. But then my children could stand behind me, which would be about a distance of nine or 10 feet from, from the, from the resident. So we do have two areas like that. So if you're going to be bringing more than two people, please explain that to the receptionist so we can get you stationed appropriately. When you come for the visit, you'll come into the front door and you will be screened at the front door. Again, from 5:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., we have a receptionist that does all of our screening. If it's after 5:00 p.m., then one of our staff members will have to screen you in. So when you come, it would be best if you would just call the phone number, our regular phone number, and ask for a nurse or a CNA to come out and screen you. Also, our activity assistant will be here till, I believe, 8:00 or 8:30. They could also come out and screen you. But you just need to call ahead of time. If you're going to come after 5:00 p.m., that would be helpful. And somebody will come out and meet you at the front desk and do the screening for you. The activity super, the activity assistant, life enrichment assistant, will be supervising the visits. And what that means is that we will have oversight of the visit. The state has actually said this in their guidelines, that the visit does not have to be watched constantly. We want to give you privacy as you visit with your loved ones, so we will keep our distance. If we got several people out there, it'll just be one staff member, just making sure that everything is being done in a safe manner and that the residents are remaining safe. I was going to say one more thing about the outdoor visits. And I can't remember what it is. So Brandon, do you have anything more to say on outdoor visits?
Just make sure you follow the map, the guide. There's arrows on the sidewalks. Make sure you follow the flow of traffic and don't turn any of an opportunity to have a big yard party. That'll be not good for Fairview Haven. Although it might be fun for one evening, it wouldn't be great for us in the long run. So make sure that everything's being followed. We don't like it any more than you guys do. There's nothing that we would love more than just to throw our front doors open and say, everybody come on in and have a big potluck. But we can't, so just help us by doing your part.
And on that note, I would also just say that in our policy that we had to write in order to do these outdoor visits, we did put in there that, and this may sound harsh and I know it sounds like prison and I apologize for that. I did not sign up to be a prison warden, so I hate this job right now. But I will say that in our policy, it states that if you do not follow the guidelines, we have no choice but to ban you from outdoor visits. So we don't want to do that. We want as many people to come and visit our residents as possible because they need you. They desperately need to see family and they need to be, six feet is not very much, is a lot, but yet it's not. And so get out here and visit them as much as you can and please follow the guidelines so that we can keep it going. If you want to give me my phone back, I'll start answering the questions that we got ahead of time. So one of the questions that has been posed to us quite often in the last month or two is when do you plan to reopen? And when will we be able to have visitors in the building again? And unfortunately, I can't give you a definitive answer on that. I can tell you that this outdoor visiting was one step in that, which we were very thankful for. The one thing, the CMS, CMS, which is our federal guidelines, came out with a reopening plan for nursing homes about, oh, it's probably been, well, it's been about 28 days because I think today would have been the day we could have reopened if we followed that plan. So it's been about a month ago, they came out with a plan and they sent that to the state health departments and basically told them they need to develop a reopening plan for their state. As of today, we have not received a reopening plan from the state of Illinois. And one of the questions later on is how can you advocate for our residents? And that's one way you could advocate. And I'm not really sure where to send you for that, but talk to our representatives, talk to our state senators. It's all state government. And tell them, we need a reopening plan. I don't want you to advocate to just reopen the doors and be done with COVID because we're not done with COVID and we still need to protect our residents. We still need some precautions in place. But we do need to start moving forward. Our residents need it. And that is really what I'd like to see is just moving forward with some precautions. But basically, the state reopening guidelines say that if you have not had a case, so there's three phases. Phase one is where we basically are right now. We can move to phase two once we've had 14 days of no new COVID cases, which we've had eternity with no new COVID cases yet. And then you have to have adequate staffing, adequate PPE. You have to have baseline testing done. And there's some other things. You have to have availability of testing. You have to have hospital availability if somebody would get sick, things like that. Basically, we meet all of the qualifications to move to phase two. In phase two, there's really no change as far as visitors. It allows for some non-essential services to be able to come in and be done, such as I believe maybe beauty shop services can be conducted in phase two. I'm not sure what other services, but there's some other services that can be done in phase two. And then phase three is another 14 days of no new cases, as well as the staffing and the PPE and all those other requirements. So basically, from the day that the state picks as this is the day we're going to start, we anticipate 28 days from that day, we would be allowed to allow visitors. Now, there will still be some very strict visitor restrictions. And I don't know what those will be yet. The state has not defined that yet. But I'm hoping that family or power of attorney, at least spouses, things of that nature, we will be able to start opening up for at that point. Also, in phase three, we'll be able to allow volunteers in the door. So some other benefits as well in phase three. When you do, when we do open up, we anticipate we'll be screening people, taking temps, probably at least till the end of the year, probably longer than that. If for any reason, we would get COVID in the building, we would be back to phase one, which means we would be under complete lockdown. At this time, the CMS guidelines do not give a timeframe for when residents will be able to leave the building. I don't even like to say that out loud, but that's what we're seeing at this point. So that is kind of the reopening plan at this point. The federal government has given us a plan. The state government has not adopted that plan yet. Our trade association, Leading Age of Illinois, is working with the department officials and trying to develop that plan. But at this point, we don't have anything other than we are allowed outdoor visits.
So again, this is not Fairview Haven dragging our heels to reopen. This is our state not adopting the federal guidelines. The federal government releases these guidelines. The state's requirement is that they have to be at least as restrictive as the federals or more restrictive.
Right.
And they haven't revised anything yet. So we're kind of stuck in limbo. Most of you probably know that we did our facility-wide testing a couple weeks ago, which thankfully was all negative. That's going to be key to the reopening process, so we're glad we got that done already. We don't know if that'll change what phase we start in or if we'll have to all start in phase one. We don't know that yet. But we're hopeful that it'll at least, it's our baseline test, so it's, you know.
That's done.
Basically, our testing plan has already started several weeks ago and that's going to be a key feature. Also, another thing I'd like to throw out there, the 100-character limit on the questions, or minimum of 100 characters, that is a default setting on Facebook Live. I tried to change it, which was a little bit disruptive to Dave's opening comments there, but I can't change it without ending the Facebook Live session, so I'm sorry about that. We can't change the settings in the middle. So if you have a question, you're just going to have to just type a bunch of extra stuff in there if it doesn't meet the 100-character.
Just put a bunch of periods at the end of your question or explanation points or question marks, whatever you want to do. So back to outdoor visits, a question that has been brought up several times is can I bring food in when I come and visit? And at this point, the answer to that is no. And primarily, the reason for that answer is because in order to eat the food, you're going to have to take off the mask. And at this point, the government is saying you must be masked during the visit. So at this point, we do not feel like we can deviate from that. And so we are saying no food during the visit. We are working on some things that maybe, possibly, we might down the road be able to allow that. But right now, the answer to that is no, you cannot bring food to the visit. You can bring food for your loved one and we can get it to them after you leave or whatever, but you cannot eat while you're visiting with them. So that's something you'll need to keep in mind. It was also asked about bringing games. If you want to bring a game when you play, come and visit. And it depends on the game, quite frankly. If it's a game that obviously physical contact isn't going to work, you're going to have to maintain the six-foot distance. You're going to need to maintain the masking. And we really wouldn't want you passing things back and forth. So you know, if you're playing Uno, that's not going to work because you're going to be handling the same cards. But you know, if it's something that doesn't require passing things back and forth or you can keep your distance and yeah, you can play games.
Musical instruments are nice, Dave.
Musical instruments are a great idea. If any of you play musical instrument, and I'll just say this, this is one of those things that we're kind of looking for loopholes. But the dining room courtyard, which is where we were doing some patio visits before, the nine, 10-feet distance, we are reserving that for resident use only. But kind of what we're starting to do is have people come and play instruments or sing or whatever at the fence and then keep the residents back several feet. That gives them something to look forward to. And we're not putting it on our calendar because we're not allowed to have group activities. And so it's not a group activity. It just happens to be that somebody is passing by and has their guitar in hand and strikes up a little concert for our residents. So that's what we're doing with that. I hope that's okay with everybody, but we just feel like it's a real benefit to our residents. And several people have done it already and it is truly a blessing. The residents love it, so please feel free to bring musical instruments.
Did you answer the question about if they have to be from the same household? The two visitors, did you answer that one?
Two questions. I'm letting you ask the questions from there.
Sorry. Can you, do visitors still have to live in the same household?
No. The reason we have that rule in place originally with the same household is because we wanted to respect the government's shutdown, which basically said you weren't supposed to leave your household. And so we felt like we needed to put that in place to respect that. And that is no longer a guideline by the state. You are allowed to leave your home and mingle with gatherings of 10, right now, I believe it is. So if, we don't want groups of 50 or 60 out there. But if you, you know, a couple siblings want to get together and come see mom, that's perfectly appropriate at this point.
Still just the two.
Just two visitors at a time, other than, that can be in the visiting area. That's correct.
Here's another question. Can you word a petition for family members to sign to pass on to our state legislators and email it to us?
I will continue to pray about that. I will tell you that I have been praying about it. I have actually reached out to our representative, Dan Brady, and I have reached out to our state senator, Jason Barickman, who has not responded to me, by the way. If anybody would like to reach out to him and tell him that that's kind of rude. And maybe he's on the call. But I want to be careful how I advocate because I'm in a tough position. I want so badly to protect our residents. I want them to be safe. I want to keep COVID out of this building. And yet I am beginning to see that these residents need visitors. And so I'm in a tough spot. I want to advocate. I want to push a petition. I'd rather that come from a family member to do a petition and sign it and send it around. You know, we'd be happy to send it out to our families, but I think it'd be better coming from a family member rather than from the administrator of the home. Do you have any more there?
Yep. You have an incredibly wonderful facility. Since the residents have been quarantined together since March, is it possible to get them together to eat in dining rooms? Mom was doing so well with social interactions and food.
Okay, that's a very good question. So we, according to the mandate, the federal mandate that came down, communal dining was, we just got cut. Do you still see it?
I'm running late, but it's not red.
I think we're still on, it's just not showing.
Okay, I hope we're still on. Do you see us talking?
Well, I'm, I have a major lag time. You'll see what happens.
Give us just a second. We may be having technical difficulties.
Our countdown's still going on.
Oh, it is.
I think we're still on. I think it's just not showing the radio.
If you're still on, it looks kind of fun.
It looks what?
We're looking fun.
Well, I'm going to keep.
We're having trouble playing it.
I'm going to keep talking.
It's paused on our end.
It is paused? Shoot. What do we do?
How did that get paused?
Did the camera die?
Oh, did it?
Yeah, it was bad. Let me see where we are. It's live again.
It is live again?
I think so.
Do you see me?
But there's such a lag time. It's saying live right now. See how it's such a lag time?
Well, I don't know if you can see me or hear me. Maybe somebody could comment or text me or let us know.
Somebody texted me. Was it, I don't know.
I don't want to answer questions just for Brandon and Lila because we talk about this stuff all the time.
It started.
We are, okay, we are.
Tell them I'm sorry, I have a lag time, so I can't tell.
So I cannot tell if I'm on video or if I'm on microphone or anything like that. So I will just talk and hopefully you're hearing my answers. So as far as communal dining, the federal mandate was that we stop all communal dining and that we feed residents in their room. So that's what we have done. There is one exception, and that is if somebody needs assistance or supervision while eating, that they can go out to the dining room and we can social distance them and things of that nature. So at this point, that is the guideline, that's a mandate. Unfortunately, under phase one, two, and three, that remains the mandate. So they are still recommending that we do not communal, we do not do communal dining and that we feed residents in the room. We are looking into that. We would really like to change that and it would have to be something that we kind of take a, do a risk assessment and decide what is the risk of it. We would, yeah, we would have to do staggered dining or something of that. I'm getting all kinds of texts, thank you very much. We are still live. So we would have to do staggered dining or something of that nature. And hopefully, we would, we would also have to do social distancing in the dining room. Group activities is another thing. I believe in phase three, actually, group activities are allowed to restart with social distancing and, you know, things of that nature. So that's the answer on the communal dining. I know in the assisted living, that was also mentioned, whether or not they could start eating in their dining room. At this point, assisted living and skilled nursing facility, even though assisted living is not governed by the federal government in any way, it is strictly state government. The state has adopted the federal mandate. So we have to follow the same mandates for assisted living, which would be Fairview Estates as well as Serenity Villa. We have to follow the same mandates for them as we do the nursing home. And you may be asking yourself, well, what about the suites, the independent living? They are not federally mandated. They are not really even state licensed, but they are a congregate living setting. So we do have to be careful and we do have to follow some guidelines there. Probably not quite to the extreme that we have been doing, but the reason we're doing that is because those residents have chosen that they would like, for the most part, not all of them, but many of them, like to come over to the nursing home part. And so if we say you don't have to follow these mandates, we cannot allow them in the nursing home. And so that's why we have kept them pretty much in sync with our regulations over here, as well as the fact that we share staff between the buildings and we just felt like it was the best to keep them under the same guidelines and the same mandates. And that's what most of the nursing homes are doing that have independent livings attached. I know Even Glow in Pontiac is doing that and all the apostolic Christian homes that have independent living attached to their nursing homes are following the same protocol. We are lightening up a little bit in independent living and there are some things that they are free to do that somebody in nursing or assisted living would not be able to do. For example, we do allow our independent living residents, if they want to, if they drive, they can go in their car and they can drive around. They can't have anybody with them. They can't roll their window down. They can't get out of their car. But they can drive around and see the countryside if they want to do that. They're also free to exercise by walking around anywhere on the campus. And I want to clarify that for those of you that are independent living or that have families, or families of independent living residents. They're not supposed to be leaving the campus. I, we need to talk about us three here about whether or not that includes the church parking lot because I have definitely seen our independent living residents over there. Haven't said anything about that yet, but the trail would definitely be off limits just because of the risk of running into somebody or whatever. So that's one thing. The other thing is with the outdoor visits, the independent living residents do not have to schedule with the receptionist, so they can schedule their own outdoor visits. But otherwise, they have to follow the same protocol as far as the masking and the six-foot social distancing and things like that. So there are a little bit of an exception in the independent living, but otherwise, everybody is treated the same throughout our campus. Did you have more there or should I go back to?
Yeah, there's a question and I don't know, maybe it's more for you, Brandon. What happens in the end of life during COVID?
Good question.
Referring to visitors or referring to what, referring to what happens to the resident.
You know what, I'm not sure that's all it said is what happens in the end of life during COVID. I'll just ask her for more clarification.
I would say it's probably visitors.
All right, so for end-of-life situations, that would be a compassionate care situation. We would have two visitors at a time.
On the COVID unit? Not on the COVID.
Sorry, not on the COVID unit.
If it's, if they're not on the COVID unit, then you could still have visitors, I think.
Right, right. So if they're on the COVID unit, unfortunately, the government does not allow visitors in the COVID unit.
Right. So if they're, if they're in our COVID unit, if we were to have some positive COVID cases and they were one of them, we don't, we don't have permission to allow visitors at that time due to the fact that you might get it and then take it out and spread it. If it's more of a matter of someone not in the COVID unit, they're passing away, maybe in hospice or something like that, we would be able to have visitors in that situation, two at a time. And then, you know, you'd have to screen in. You have to pass the screening because we wouldn't want to have you come in if you were potentially sick. But yeah, it's a little bit different if they're dying of COVID rather than dying during COVID.
Right. I might just throw a question in here that I received earlier and it's actually a question that we've probably received on a daily basis over the last three or four months. I don't understand. Your employees are out and around and doing all kinds of things. Why is it okay for them to come in and be with the residents and families can't even come in to visit? That is a very fair question. And I don't know if I have a good answer for you, but I will try to give you the best answer that I know. And I will give you the answer that the Department of Public Health would give you. And that is employees are essential people. Your loved ones are in the nursing home for a reason. They need care. And so the employees are here to give them care. And I understand maintenance employees aren't caring for the residents, but they are caring for them in the sense that they're keeping them safe. They're keeping the building in good working order. And so every employee that works here has an essential function for the care of your loved one. And that's why they can come in and you can't. Now, you could argue that you are just as essential as all of the caregivers. And I'm not going to argue with you because I would, I would tend to agree with that. But unfortunately, the Department of Public Health doesn't agree with that. As far as employees can go around and do whatever they want, that is true. And unfortunately, I have no control over what my employees do outside of work. I will tell you that we have sent many, many texts in the course of the last three or four months encouraging them to follow the state guidelines, to make sure that they are masking when they're going in public places, to make sure that they're keeping social distancing. And I honestly, I don't know what my employees do outside of work other than some of them. But we are, we are encouraging them to take our residents into consideration as they make decisions about where they go and what they do. And I can tell you that the three of us around this table are very cautious about what we do. Now, I'm saying that, I'm going to tell you that you might catch me doing some things that I probably shouldn't and, you know, I apologize for that. I really do try to follow all the rules and to do everything the right way. Sometimes I forget and I, you know, leave my mask in the car when I get out and do something. But I will tell you that I've been the only. But I will tell you that I've been the only one at Ace Hardware with a mask about every time that I've walked in there. But I still wear a mask when I go into Ace Hardware, at least I try to remember. And I don't say that to brag, but just understand, we're trying to take all the precautions that we can to keep our residents safe. And I hope that that's the mentality of all of our employees, and I believe it's the mentality of most of them. So I hope that gives you a good enough answer. Again, I don't want to leave anybody with the feeling that I think you're unessential, because you're not. Families are very essential, and I think that we've learned that in the last three or four months. Can I have flowers sent in for a resident? Absolutely, you can have flowers. You can have anything sent in for a resident nowadays. We used to have a policy where things had to be kept 48 hours unless they were perishable. That policy is no longer in place, so we take all deliveries straight to the resident. Can I just take my loved one out for a drive in my car? And the answer to that is no. You cannot do that. And somebody also then added, then why can employees take residents out on the bus? And if you would ask some people at the Department of Public Health, they would say that employees can't take people out on the bus. But when we look at that, we believe the bus is an extension of our building. There's really no difference sitting on the bus than sitting in our living room. We do not allow the windows to be open when we go out for bus rides. I took the bus out this afternoon, or this morning, with three residents from Serenity Villa, and we had a lovely ride, and they were all very much at least six feet apart on that bus. And they were all masked, and there were no windows open, and it was perfectly safe for them. The difference between us taking them on the bus and you taking them in your car is, number one, your car is not facility, so we don't know what's in the car. We don't know who's been in the car. We don't know, you know, things like that. And as far as you taking them, you know, it's the same as you coming in here. To the state, that's not an essential person, which, again, we would disagree with. But that's, that's the rules we have to abide by. You want to ask some more on the screen there? You got any more?
There isn't any more.
Okay, well, I'll just keep going down this list then. Can I drive my dad to his doctor's appointment? Can we go through a drive-through on the way home? So I'll tackle the first question first, because actually, that probably answers the second question. So this has been some, a source of discussion for several weeks. Who can actually transport residents? Lila listened to a Department of Public Health question and answer session. This question was actually asked of them, and the answer was, no, families are not allowed to drive residents to appointments. And we've talked about it, and we've kicked it around, and we have allowed some families to do it. We finally did come to a complete conclusion this morning, and this is what we're going to live by. This is, as we did our risk assessment, this is what we feel is the most appropriate. So independent living, we are going to allow power of attorneys to transport there, as well as assisted living. So anybody in assisted living and independent living, we're going to allow power of attorneys only to transport residents. In the skilled nursing facility, we are going to continue to say that only staff will be allowed to transport them to appointments. And I know that may seem a little bit harsh, and I hope that you can support that decision. Just as we look at the risk assessment, we feel like that's, not only from the standpoint of the health of the resident, but also following the regulations and the guidelines that we have out there. We feel like that's the best approach that we can take at this time. So at this point, that's what our policy is going to be. We are possibly going to hire a driver in addition to the staff that's already here, because as more and more health appointments open up, we're probably going to have more transportation needs. So that's how we'll address that. As far as stopping and going through the drive-through, absolutely not. I'm sorry, but it goes back to the same issue with eating during an outdoor visit, is you're going to have to take your mask off to do that. And if, by the way, if you're the power of attorney, and you're transporting your resident from assisted living and independent living, you are still required to screen in before you leave with that resident. And you are also required to wear a mask the entire time you are with the resident. That's very important, too, as a precautionary. I think I addressed that question. Yeah, and the assisted living residents have been asking as well about the communal dining. We will continue to assess that and decide if that's something that they can do over there once we get that dining room done over there. But at this point, no, the communal dining is not allowed. And I think I addressed that one. Another question that's come up, for independent living residents, now that we're allowing them to go out for rides, the question came up, can we go to the dollar store? No, because you would have to get out of your car to go to the dollar store. But with that, I don't know if we have any residents listening in tonight or not, but if you ever need anything, we, our staff is very willing to go get whatever you need. Just give us a list, and we will gladly accommodate. We have a lot of staff members that are willing to do that. So don't hesitate to ask for your needs. And I know that doesn't get you out of the building, and I feel really bad about that. And I think that's one of the real blessings of the bus rides, that we have been allowed, or I shouldn't say we've been allowed, we've just been doing, is it, it does give them an opportunity to at least see something different other than the four walls that are around them here. I also really appreciate the outdoor visits. I think that's going to be a real plus, so. We're moving in the right direction. Everything is going really well. We have no positive cases. We have no positive staff. I hope that doesn't change tomorrow. You all know that it could, but at this point, things are going really well. So we feel blessed and thankful, and I guess I would just say, too, thank you for your prayers. And we feel them every day, and we would not be getting through this without them. So thank you for those of you that are praying, and continue to do that. Any other questions out there?
Is that there?
Just to thank you.
We'll maybe give you a couple more minutes, if anybody has anything, to go ahead and throw them out there.
There's like a 15-second delay between.
Okay. And if you can't think of questions now, or you can't figure out how to comment on Facebook Live, that's okay. You can always email me, email Brandon. We still have that Gmail account out there. I can't remember the address now, but maybe we'll post that tomorrow so that you still have that Gmail account that you can email questions to. Feel free to call us at any time. We are here to answer your questions. I've said this many a times. I don't know if I said it on the last town hall meeting that we had, but we are constantly communicating about COVID, and we think everything is being communicated to all of you. And sometimes we forget. And please understand, it is not our intent to hide anything or keep anything from you. Please ask. The other thing, the policy, it is available to you. If you want to see our policy, I think I mentioned this the last time we had family together. It started out as a two-page policy. I think we're up to 16 pages, probably. Actually, it'd be more than that now. It's over 20 pages now because of the testing policy. But we would be happy to share that with you. Some people I know are putting it out on their websites. We just decided that's not necessary, because the thing is changing so frequently. But certainly, we want to give it to you if you want to see it. Just ask me, and I'd be happy to email it to you. And again, never hesitate to ask questions. And voice your concerns, if you have concerns. You know, we, we make decisions, and oftentimes, we take your concerns and your thoughts into consideration as we make those decisions, and we look at the risk assessment and things of that nature. So feel free to give any suggestions, any comments, thoughts you might have. Be happy to hear them.
Also, keep in mind with that, though, that we are pretty much interpreting the guidelines about as liberally as we possibly can, while still keeping the residents safe. So I know that everyone's opinion would be, we want to be able to come in there and visit them, but.
Right.
Or, you know, a variety. The questions reflect, everybody wants more contact with their resident, and that's what we want, too, but.
Yeah.
We just can't.
And one other thing that we didn't mention, and we should mention, I think it maybe got posted on Facebook, but we did have all nursing homes, I think all nursing homes in the country are supposed to have an infection control survey by the State Department of Public Health. We did have that. Was it two weeks ago? Or was it just last week?
A week and a half ago.
It was a Wednesday.
It was Wednesday.
It wasn't last Wednesday.
So it was two weeks ago tomorrow. We had two surveyors show up from the Illinois Department of Public Health.
Was it last Wednesday?
It was last Wednesday.
The last four months has run together.
It was just last week. Anyway, they were here in our building for about an hour, hour and a half, very complimentary. They did some observation, very little, thankfully, because they didn't want to be in the resident areas, which was very much appreciated. They were very respectful. They were impressed with how our staff handled things. They took our policy. They took, they had access to our charts, and they went through those off-site for a day and a half and found no issues with our infection control. So we're very thankful for that. And they did review that 20-page policy, and they didn't see any issues with our policy, which, that's wonderful. So I think our staff is doing something right.
Can I just say something? Hopefully, they can hear me. But the base for CMS reopening, the guidelines, was, you know, the two things that absolutely have to be done are the initial testing, the baseline testing, and then the infection control survey. And then it's just a matter of how many days pass, and what does the outbreak in your community look like? So hopefully, we've got those two things done. Once they give us a date, we can start counting those days by then.
Right.
You know, hopefully.
Very good. Any more questions, Lila? Okay, I think then that we are going to go ahead and wrap this up. Thank you very much. I don't know how many people are still on, because we lost our counter, and we lost our video, and we lost everything on my computer here. So thank you very much for joining us. I hope that it was helpful. And again, please feel free to reach out if you have any questions. Thank you.